................................................................................................................................................................................................
Got another nine hundred thousand. So we need to increase that. Reconfigured. What do you have?
That's amendment. Miss Captain. Amendment to the budget. Very good. Without. Now we have a list.
Housekeeping issue, but. Six million become. Piece of paper just away with.
Lead made sixty-eight. Seconds of delay. Sponsor of.
Make a comment. This is. The request by the Sullivan. This was left in. West. If we prove that. After they see the final document. Ever. An opportunity to find it.
And I'll do this by. God number. That's amendment number three. Accepts amendment number.
Is this the five percent? It is. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. They automatically.
All employees that are. And all of that never happened. Was the sheriff asked. More to equal. I have vacancies. We've got.
Commissioner.
Couple of questions for. The Office of Finance. Not same as because of the. Transfer on page fifty. In that. Because of the. Personnel or more.
Planning is for. The two as far as. Budget did not. Have so. Their. I agree that should. I. And they would not. Twenty thousand dollars. Training and things. We absorbed this one.
What they pay. That cost.
There's.
Well, the. Dollars and the trans. Thousand three hundred twenty-five.
Increase would have the salary.
Thank you. And the second. The other day we talked about. That was the actual amount. Member. Put in there, but last. Six thousand. Sent because there's. Patient on why. As the last.
Fiscal year. For this pass.
What we got in this year's budget?
Spent this year.
Page. The over. It's on.
Expanded in many times. Twenty-one years, twenty-two. Trial balance here. Angela.
Can you recall how close we are to the one hundred ninety-six thousand here in the dollars spending this year?
We are not at two hundred ninety-six thousand. That program is funded from. We are wholly closer. I would say one seventy-five.
But the money is still being used and it will be adjusted and we're just leaving enough in.
Yeah, and that includes fall screen and then there's a small break in the center.
It's not clean. Sure. Go ahead. Go ahead.
That's CTE program and University Parole Program that they offer the thing here in the hospital. The doing on it.
There are some differences in terms of certificate of completion and that's why it doesn't hit the fiscal year the way the Pierce scholarships used to do. They were bills, but.
We may need to change the header to what that is because it's really. Listed as Northeast State Scholarship Program and if it's covering a lot more things, it'd be nice if it was referenced. And my main thing is we have from ninety-two to one hundred ninety-six thousand and that just seemed like a lot. And the last question I have, and I think Larry talked a little bit about this, the animal control budget went up, I think, twenty percent this year to go up a hundred and six thousand. And my understanding is that that is one of the new positions that the animal control now has hired a new person and that's why that's gone up twenty percent in the last couple of years.
They're planning to hire additional animal control officers. A big part of that cost.
And that's an increase. That's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Glauber, you're recognized on item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner's Orange touched on some things there meant to go that it's kind of stuck with me and I'm sure it has with all the other members on this board about the five percent raises for the county employees across the board. I want to read something to you. Now, this body has shown support for all county employees of the general highway and other miscellaneous funds by providing at least a five percent raise across the board. The schools have requested funding for a one percent raise for the support staff while this past budget year provided an enriched pay scale for teachers which was, you know, this body supported. It was stated numerous times during the last year's budget process that the intent was to provide an improvement for the support staff. Now that improvement is only a one percent raise. This body is limited as to what it can do for the school budget. Therefore, we are proposing the following action be taken by this body. This amendment to the school budget's fund, whereas the school department upon presenting their original budget request for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year advised that the projected ending fund balance would be well above three percent, the minimum amount that's recommended by the State Department of Education. Now therefore, given that other county employees are receiving a minimum of a five percent raise, I'm asking this body to approve and to encourage an increase in funding by the Board of Education for the support staff by seven hundred thousand dollars to provide the extra four percent for a five percent raise for all support staff at the school department to be funded from the fund balance or from other sources available. The reason I am asking for this, the one percent raise was. Was gave to the support staff. That's the, that's the workers. It's plumbers, electricians, masons. Their thrust runs out to school and the last ones to leave. And I think we need to recommend to the school department for them to give those employees that extra four percent, which will make it five across the board for those folks also. If you look at the price of fuel, inflation, some of these folks wouldn't be getting a ten, eleven cent an hour raise. There's no way they could raise their family on that. And I'm asking this body to approve that amendment.
Mr. Glauber moves to for adoption of item amendment number four, seconded by Commissioner Dwight King. Orders open for questions. Madam Sponsor, do you accept, Darlene, do you accept this amendment number four as a sponsor of item number two? Thanks for voting on it. Okay, well, we will do that. Any questions for the sponsor? Okay, we have Dan, our counsel. I'll recognize you first. That amendment concerns me. I have to say I don't spend a lot of time on the school board budget, but as I understand it, they present their budget to us and we either approve it or reject it. An amendment from this body to their budget would need to go back to them and get approval and be resubmitted by them before we could approve it. I, that's the way I understand it. I stand to be corrected by Mr. Bailey or by the school board, but that's the way I understand it. Mr. Street, Farbey, if may they ever correct you, but let me give you an opinion. In reading the amendment, it says, I am asking this body to approve and to encourage an increase. And generally, when spending out of the fund balances, they come back to the commission for approval on a, on a suggestion from the school board. This is preapproving good board action should they decide to take it. Is that right, Mr. Sponsor?
Sir.
It's an encouragement and not a direction?
Makes sense.
That makes sense. Okay. We have others. Mr. Roblin, you're up now.
Just a couple of things for clarification for me. This is coming out of their fund balance, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I think that's important to note, you know, that this budget, we have over a million dollars above and beyond what was required for us to, to fund. And if anybody listened to the last BOE meeting, there again, we were through under the bus over three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So, you know, everybody needs to pay attention to where all this money is going. And I support your move.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Roblin. The board seems to be clear. Any, any other questions? Adam Clark, can you get that on board, amendment number four?
Okay.
So we will. Get an amendment number four on the, to item number two on board. Commissioner Vance, you just went away. Push him up there. I know, but.
I ask you more.
Ice cream change. You're recognized.
I, I agree with what Herschel's saying, but the question I have, and maybe Richard Bailey can answer this, this is the budget, time to vote on the budget. And that's either increase or decrease the budget, finalize the budget. Making a recommendation during a budget hearing or a budget vote, I just don't see how that really falls into play. That should be done by resolution. Because we're not doing anything to change the budget. And we're voting on the budget. We're going to vote the budget up. We're going to vote the budget down. We're going to modify. You're making a recommendation. That's not a budgetary issue that we're discussing at this time. Am I correct, Richard Bailey?
I think you're actually discussing the values within the budget and the differences in. Support for the staff as, as far as actually amending the budget, you're correct. It is not amending the budget. It's just making an effort to encourage the school department to come back after reconsidering that one percent raise to increase it to a larger amount and allow them to know that the county commission would be in support of that, of them treating their support staff at the same level the county is committing, treating their other employees. Did I answer your question? It does not.
No, no. But, I mean, I just wanted to be.
Well, it's a natural. It might not be the one you wanted.
Well, it ain't better what I wanted, but I just don't know if it's legitimate right to bring that up during the hearing because I was told nothing else would be brought up except the budget tonight. And that's what we're doing opposite of what we were told before.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vance. Commissioner George, you're recognized.
Thank you. Being that it's a called meeting, and I think the rules of a called meeting, and I guess, Dan, this is for you. My understanding on a called meeting is we're only allowed to vote on the items that we listed it to be called because this is actually, I understand what both of y'all have said in a normal meeting, we could go outside and talk about it, but when you're a called meeting and it's advertised as a called meeting, are we allowed to vote on things that are not on our agenda? Just.
With you and Commissioner Vance, I think it's, I think it's not a subject for the call meeting.
I mean, if this was a regular, if this happens Thursday, the coming Thursday, a regular meeting, I have no issue. I'm just concerned that with the ruling of a called meeting and how the announcement is made that we only can address those items. But if you all rule that it can be voted on, that's just my concern.
Thank you, Ms. George. I appreciate that. Commissioner Gardner, you're recognized.
Commissioner Glauber, thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Glauber, just given the explanations that you've got, would you, would you entertain the idea of withdrawing your request and replace it with a resolution next Thursday? If you'll do that, I'll be a co-sponsor.
Yes, sir, I will. I just wanted to make awareness and let folks know that we need to treat those employees as equal and as fair as we do the others. So that's the reason why I wanted to bring that up tonight. I figured since it was budget time, it would be a perfect time to do that. So I have no problem with putting in a resolution for this coming Thursday night.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Glauber, are you comfortable with converting this to a resolution?
I have no problem. Yes, I will.
I concur with Mr. Bailey and Mr. Street and Mr. Vance. I think the will, it appears the will of the commission. Consensus by the shaking of the head, we didn't take a hand vote, but we do meet one week from tonight and, and earlier if we need to. But I do believe the intent of the sponsor was not to amend the budget, but to urge. And.
Exactly.
So I agree with the county attorney. Thank you, Mr. Glauber. Appreciate it. Commissioner Stanley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess this question is for Larry. We were talking about a few minutes ago, taking, adding the money to your budget for the extra employees. How much did you say that was?
Extra employees. It was the amount that's transferred.
To do the.
From the school department. It's just a total increase to my budget with the exception of.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Is he good now? Okay. Oh, the transfer over from school department when the private act was written, stated that the school department would be responsible and county's council budgets would be responsible in maintaining financing as they had, and which meant they transfer over from school department for the salaries, benefits, supplies and so forth. And everything that is in that budget except for the five percent raises is based upon moving the school's business office funding over through the transfer. There's twenty thousand dollars that I said for miscellaneous costs I think we're going to need next year because we basically stripped everything we've got in trying to operate this year with temporary quarters and so forth and so forth.
Does the school system still have accounting department at their school that does?
They have some people that are still up there that they retained and gave other jobs to.
Okay. Is that what they cut their budget by taking that money?
That removes the fiscal offices and some of the appropriations there to transfer over. And, but as far as the, what I'm seeing is four people, I guess it's four people that they retained in the school department and they're charging that somewhere else in the budget now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The board is clear. Appears you're ready to vote. Ms. Calvin, reduce her motion for passage on second and final reading. The board opens. Cast your vote on item number two. Requires thirteen votes for passage. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Adam Clark, take the vote.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Having received the necessary majority, item number two is adopted. Next up, item number three. Mr. Gardner, you're recognized on item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three, procreates funds to the charitable civic and nonprofit organizations specified fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Without objection, I move past it, item number three.
Mr. Gardner, reduce his motion for adoption, seconded by Commissioner Crosswhite. Mr. Stidham, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the nonprofit organization at Pet Works Animal Shelter Inn for one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This request originally came through the administrative committee during the committee hearings where the budget was passed with stipulation that they add the county areas into their areas, service areas. They did pass that at their board meetings. That was, that's what Mr. Atkins was referring to earlier. So I request that this be added on tonight.
Proper motion. We have a second. Taken by Commissioner George. Commissioner Locke, we have a list. Hunter, do you want to be recognized on his motion for amendment number one? It's another amendment. Okay. Anybody have questions for the sponsor on amendment number one to item number three? Okay, we have Commissioner Ackert, you're, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. My ass, Commissioner Stidham, you're exactly right. It came through budget and it did not pass. And then, I'd be hypocritical if I didn't mention this. It's not about Pet Works, but another nonprofit came to ask for some money for the first time. We'll be voting on that next week in a resolution because I feel like, you know, we need to see where that goes. It doesn't need to be in the budget. Like you said, they just passed that they're going to work with or maybe expand their horizons a bit. So I, to me, it's a resolution. It's not a budget item at this point for me personally.
Thank you, Commissioner Ackert. I believe Commissioner Crosswhite had, for some reason. Commissioner Crosswhite, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gary. I do believe we did need to give this animal shelter some money, but I'm not sure about if it needs to be on the budget or wait until a resolution. But a couple of questions. How many animal control officers does Pet Work have?
If you want to know the technical stuff, I'd like to ask Mr. Atkins to come up and recess for that. He's got all the technical information.
Okay.
I'd hate to misquote you in anything.
We will recess. Mr. Atkins, would you like to address that? We'll recess briefly for explanation.
Yeah, and I do not have the numbers with me. I'm sorry I didn't have our director with us, but I believe we have, I can tell you we have a full facility right now with dogs. I believe it's over sixty dogs and probably almost as many cats.
Now, do you know how many animal control officers?
Oh, animal control officers. I'm sorry.
I think we.
I believe it is just one currently.
Just one for the.
And I think the intent is we will need to hire another one if we take on this additional territory from the county.
And I apologize to ask you this again. What areas were you planning on including on Allen, Southland County?
Yes, I have, I have a map here which is probably hard for you to see. I'm having this to you, but it would include all of Sullivan Gardens, all of Colonial Heights, Indian Springs, and Bloomingdale.
Okay. And do you know what your overall budget is for the year?
Oh, boy.
I'm sorry.
We just passed that and I, I wish I could answer your question. I want to say.
I agree with you.
I did not agree with that. But I want to say it was five hundred thousand, much of which comes from our own fundraising, much of which comes from the city of Kingsport. And then we also have our adoption fees, which helps us to be able to make ends meet. And I can tell you it's a tight budget.
Yes, sir. I agree. I agree. Thank you. Gary, I agree with David. I think this needs to be a resolution instead of a amendment to the budget. And I will support some funds because they are going out in the county, but I think it needs to be a resolution.
I get it, Russ. I think Hunter had one to make comment on what Russ was talking about. So Hunter.
Yeah, Russ, how much of the city of Kingsport, a lot of y'all this coming fiscal year, money wise, increase?
Three hundred.
I think it was three hundred thousand. Three fifty gets correct. I'm sorry.
And then let me touch on this. So when a dog or a cat is lost in the lower portion of, the lower end of Sullivan County, they don't come to Sullivan County Shelter. Some of them do.
Some of them do, but they usually stop on eleven W and they get dropped at Pet Works. And that could be anywhere in Bloomingdale, to Carter's Valley, to the state line of Virginia, Washington County line, they're not going to go to eleven W or to Blountville here, they're going to stop at eleven W. So they do get a lot of pets from the county rural areas of the lower end of the county, not just the city of Kingsport.
That's true.
So I, you know, the city brought it together, the cities gave money, I think it's time for us to ante up because they do a lot in Sullivan County, not just Kingsport. And we need to be in a joint effort to make it better for the whole county in whole. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe we have a list here, and if I may direct a question to Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Stidham, did you want to amend your motion to include the areas that Mr. Atkins indicated on the map?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We'll take that map, Russ, and file it with clerk.
Yes. And may I say I apologize for being unprepared to answer these questions, I didn't know I was going to be speaking or I would have had all that information.
You know you're going to get the first, third degree.
I thought I was here to listen.
We'll file that with clerk. So Mr. Stidham, amend his amendment, amendment number one. Commissioner Blaylock, you're recognized.
Well, I guess I've just not been there with Sullivan County Animal Shelter, but I want to know what areas do they cover now that this, places that are covered, Sullivan County, which one is it covering now? Which areas? Do you remember that they're not, the whole county?
We've kind of got to stop this cross-talk because everybody can't hear and people talk at the same time. I don't see anybody in the audience representing the Sullivan County Shelter, but I would say that there's never been any bright lines on what Pet Works covers and what Sullivan County covers. Sullivan County covers the, most of the county, the tiny flats area, Sullivan County takes Bristol, Pitts, and Bloomingdale and things of that nature. And right now, they are servicing Colonial Heights, Sullivan Gardens, and Carter's Valley. What Mr. Atkins has proposed, that if this funding becomes available, they will take, they will take responsibility for that area. So it would reduce the area that Sullivan County has to cover with a random control officer. And I'm sorry to get into that, that ain't your question, Jimmy. Okay, Commissioner Aker, you're up.
Sorry to speak again, because I mean, I agree with everything Commissioner Locke pretty much said just a second ago. But again, the hypocrisy of my vote on this tonight would be, kind of like we have the Museum of the Blues that asked for money, and I feel like it needed to be a standalone because we have Sullivan County Archives and museums, and that's going on a resolution. Therefore, we have our own animal shelter, so for this, I felt like it needs to be the resolution and have a nice presentation so Mr. Atkins can do a nice presentation next week, and then we can go forward with it. And that's, that's totally hypocri- so I would be hypocritical if I voted for it tonight, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Aker. Commissioner Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just keep this very brief, I understand the need, Gary, and John, and Hunter, for that, but I did want to remind everyone, we've already contributed seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase of that land that that building is on now down Highway eleven W. I mean, it's not like we not, we have not contributed anything as it stands right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morell. Commissioner Calton.
Yes, I guess this is for, I forgot your name, Russell. Can I ask you a question?
You may.
Russell, go, where are you at?
When you come for your presentation, I would just like to know the percentage only of county in Sullivan Gardens, Colonial Heights, Bloomingdale, East West Carter's Valley, that bring their animals to Pet Works? Do you have a record of that there?
I don't know how we can answer that.
Would you have a record of that there? Because you say that they stop there and they bring them, I'd just like to know what percentage comes from the county?
We could probably give you an estimate, I'm not sure we could be exact.
Well, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to be exact, but I would be interested in the percentage.
We can work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Commissioner George, you're recognized.
Thank you. Yeah, my district does have, and Randy's too, I mean, we have some of the further area from the Blountville Animal Shelter. And if, you know, if the county area there, and please keep in mind that the citizens of Kingsport do live in Sullivan County. So they are taxpayers, they are paying, you know, their tax money to go through the Sullivan County Shelter because they're Sullivan County residents. And if you're in my district that is the county only, it's a very far drive, as is a lot of the further western side, to get all the way up here. And with the hours of the shelters, you know, if you're working, if you find a dog, you don't always have time to come all the way up here. And when they're, and I understand from Blountville, and, you know, I had a bear run in front of me yesterday, which is just a whole other thing, but where you have to go and pick up the number of deer bodies and things on, that are over on the county only side, the gas money come from Blountville over here, and the timeframe to do it, it's a long drive. And, you know, we serve all the counties and having two locations is a benefit to the citizens of Sullivan County. And I think what Ms. Wagner was talking about is, you know, they want to work together, they want to do some joint fundraisers, they want to help all the residents of Sullivan County, whether you live in the city, I mean, the animals don't know if they live in the city or if they live in the unincorporated area, they don't know the difference. And, you know, sometimes we need to not know the difference also because all the tax money is up there and it's mixed. And I think we need to uplift both. And we increased the Sullivan County budget one hundred and six thousand this year. And yes, we have given money before, and when you're looking at what you're saying, I understand, but with the one-time money that is asked for, for a tourist item, is one-time money. I think Mr. Stidham's hope is that this is something moving forward, that Sullivan County will have some money in two animal shelters. So wherever I am, I pick up a feral cat, I don't have to think, which side of the street am I on, which place do I go to take this cat? That a lot of people in Sullivan County have two options depending where they're located. And then we, it would be a budget item moving forward from now on. Because, I mean, all of these are animals, and they don't know the difference. And I don't want to get in a spit and contest if my animal is a Kingsport resident or not, I have furbers I live around. So I am going to support this because I believe it's going to both animal shelters. And I did approve an extra hundred and six thousand for Sullivan County, and that's in addition where we've gone up twenty percent in just the last two years there, which I voted on somehow. And I think we should put some money in Pet Works, I think they're providing a service, but they're also accepting areas in our county that we represent.
Thank you, Ms. George, I know my hearing gave malfunction there at one time.
What I said that you missed was brilliant.
It only malfunctioned on one word and I couldn't...
That was not a swear word.
Well, as I say, it's a malfunction. Commissioner Stanley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Russ, whenever you come back up here next week to bring the map, can you add like Blair's Gap to that? Because it's part of Sullivan Gardens down there, it's in the lower western end.
I have not, I'm not sure where that is on the map. Our board has approved this one, and we could go back to the board and ask to add additional area. If you could sit down with me and show me where that is.
Well, I just, well, Blountville, they have to drive all the way through all of the Kingsport down to there if you're going to take Sullivan Gardens.
Right, and I would not expect any pushback from our board on that, I just need to know what it is so we could go back and have a vote on it so that we have a mutual understanding.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If you could show me where on the map that is, I would like to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crosswhite, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I still would think that this would be a resolution instead of adding to the budget. And I did agree with Coette, since we've increased our animal shelter one hundred and six thousand dollars, then I think we'll need to give Kingsport that same amount, but I would request that this be a resolution instead. Thank you.
Commissioner Calton, you're recognized.
Russ, this is me again. I was going to tell you where Blair's Gap is. You go down Sullivan Garden Parkway, turn on Lone Star, and go all the way to the Hopkins County.
Okay, okay, I know where you're talking about, I didn't know the name of it, thank you.
We've kind of looked, we've kind of looked at this map here and it's probably not going to go there, but again, we'll have, we may have a second shot at that, Russ. Okay, Commissioner King, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I don't want to bring up a lot of bad history, but I've kind of got a taste in my mouth from what happened with Kingsport and the animal shelter, when we kind of got the raw end of it, and we got kind of dumped on with our animal shelter. And we came back to Blountville, we put a lot of money and time into it, and we've got it up going to where it needs to be. It's not perfect, but I think it's a whole lot better than what it was several years ago, and that's because of a lot of hard work and money from this body here. And at the time when we split and moved on, you know, we, it cost us quite a bit of money. And I don't, I don't forget that. But I think, you know, Sullivan County's done a great job with what we've got. You know, I know Blair's Gap's a long ways from Blountville. I've got a long ways in my area. So are we going to give Johnson City, I could take my dog, or a dog, to Johnson City a whole lot quicker than I could to Blountville, Kingsport. So again, you know, if we're going to start, you know, splitting areas and all that, I want something from my area. If we're going to do this, I mean, I just want to be fair with the whole county. And, you know, I live in, my area lives in Sullivan County too, and they pay Sullivan County taxes. And I just want to be fair with the whole county. But I don't agree with this. We've had our chance before, and I think we got the raw end of it, and I think we're doing fine the way we are. Thanks.
Commissioner Glover, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a nonprofit organization, correct?
Yes.
Okay. How can a nonprofit organization have an enforcement officer? It's Sullivan County Animal Shelter. But we own the animal shelter. That's, that's a question I've got. How, how is a nonprofit like that going to have an enforcement officer going all over the county, picking up animals and enforcing the rules and regulations since then?
We'll have to refer to back to, Mr. Atkins on that one, he's the attorney here.
It's my understanding that they're deputized by the Kingsport Police Department, and I can't speak for the county, but I would imagine that would come through the Sheriff's Department in order to write citations. They're not, they're not authorized to, to bring criminal charges, but they can issue citations, and they can pick up animals.
But our enforcement officers are county employees, and they work for the county, so they have the right to do that type of...
Sworn officer.
No, we're not going to be making arrests, but we could issue citations.
Dan, is that, is that correct on what we're saying?
You have a good question, you just have to kind of organize the answers. Russ said the officers were deputized by the city of Kingsport Police Department, so I would think that that would be a satisfactory answer. As far as Sullivan County goes, I don't know, to be honest with you, whether these animal control officers are deputized by the Sheriff's Department or not. I just have to check into it. But I understand what you're asking, if they don't work for the Sheriff's Department, how do they get law enforcement authority? It's a good question, they'd have, they'd just about have to be deputized by either the city of Kingsport or Sullivan County one.
It would, if I can interject, and folks, we made it to number three, let's don't get on up tonight. I would interject that if the animal control officer employed by Pet Works wanted to be a sworn officer of the Sullivan County Sheriff's Department, he could enforce those rules outside the city of Kingsport, but it would require them meeting certain standards that the Sheriff's Department has. Is that right, Dan? But that's the only way to be a sworn officer, issue citations. And that would just be a little MOU between the county and Kingsport. So, okay, let's go on. Herschel, you're still recognized.
That's the only question I had, I mean, the officers that they've gotten out of this doing animal control are Kingsport city officers. How are they going to have the right to be out in the county enforcing the laws in the county when they're Kingsport city officers? That's the question I've got. How are you going to turn them?
Okay, thank you. We have a couple more on the board, like I said, we're down to number three, and Mr. Aker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, it'd be, this, this is, the reason why, and I'll be honest, why I want it as a resolution, because the board has met, they now have hired a director, things are going in the right direction. When they came in front of the Budget Committee, someone from the city of Kingsport came and presented, you know? And so that's why it's hard to say we're going to give one hundred and sixty thousand dollars to something that they were still floundering. You know, there was no direction, that's why I think, again, I'd be hypocritical, I can't vote for this as a budget amendment just because of what I asked the Museum of Blues to do. When they presented to the Budget Committee, it wasn't going to pass, it said, "Come back when you're ready to actually present." And they did, and they came good. So I think Russ has had a lot of questions tonight, he didn't expect. So I think come, give a nice presentation, show us what's going on, and get excited about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Aker. That clears the board. Commissioner Stidham, you're recognized. Renew your motion if you choose.
I renew it. The one thing I'd like to bring up, this went, this went all the way through the budget process. It started day one, from committee meetings all the way through. The museum, which I do support, Mr. Crosswhite, came up just a few weeks ago and was dropped on the budget, it didn't go all the way through. So that was one of the things, and I'm sure that will pass easily, but I like to renew it.
Renew your motion?
Yes.
Properly seconded, any further discussion? This vote will be on the board.
What's sixteen?
Okay, thank you, Dan. Will the board open? Cast your vote. It's amendment number one. Amendment number one to item number three.
Mr. Chairman, would that go back to Mr. Gardner to accept?
Yeah, you seconded, yes, it was probably seconded originally, I just didn't announce that, thank you, thank you. Board's open, please cast your vote. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Adam Clark, take vote.
Ten yes, fourteen no.
Having failed to receive the necessary majority, item, amendment number one to item number three is rejected. We're back on item number three. Commissioner Gardner, renew his motion for, renew my motion for passage, item number three. Seconded by Mr. Crosswhite, back on the, ended discussion. Mr. Panth, you're recognized on item number three.
Is this where we need to go back and make the amendment on the Kingsport law settlement through?
It was amended, I guess, in the original, item number two. Item number two is reflective of item number three.
All right, so it already started with ten, so you're saying thirty, from the two oh nine, two seventy, now fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, it should be two thirty-nine.
From the two oh nine, two seventy-nine fiscal year, twenty-one, twenty-two, it should be two thirty-nine, two seventy-nine for twenty-three year. You've got two twenty-four, which is wrong. It's, it should be two seventy-nine. Sorry, two thirty-nine, two seventy-nine for twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
Meaning back to the approval of the resolution, we have overlooked something, but there's a lot of language there. I found where there was an amendment. The increase of the twenty thousand dollars.
The amendment was for the twenty to be added on to the top of the ten, which was voted on that night. Herschel amended it, added twenty on top of the ten, which gave us thirty thousand. And last year we got two oh nine, two seventy-nine. So this coming fiscal year should be two thirty-nine, two seventy-nine.
I have to say the resolution was confusing to us.
Well, we should be booked on tonight's, a, a number of two thirty-nine, two seventy-nine for life saving.
You offer that as amendment?
Should be fifteen thousand more of what's stated on paper that we have in front of us tonight. That's right.
You offer that as amendment to be accepted by sponsor. Sponsor accepts.
I accept that.
And without objection, sponsor accepts the amendment.
Takes it to four eighty-four, six twenty-six.
Okay, everybody over on guard. Okay. I believe the board is clear. I believe you're ready to vote on item number three. Will the board open? Cast your vote on item number three as amended. Everyone voted? Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Adam Clark take vote.
Twenty-three, or twenty-four yes, zero no.
Having received necessary majority, item number three is adopted. Ladies and gentlemen, that completes our resolution agenda and the budget document for the year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Thank you for your participation. Thank you for the good questions. Thank you for the debate. I would tell the, I would advise the sponsors of Mr. Stidham. And those of you who amended it, it did not get passed, that we have a meeting next week, the final meeting of this commission. And before we go, I want to say this. We've, we've all come through a difficult nine months. But I want to congratulate, before we get to the last meeting, I want to congratulate this commission on, I think, making more progress on behalf of the citizens of Sullivan County than any commission I've ever served with. And I've served with some good ones. So give yourself a hand. Thank you. Please come prepared next, next week. We've got some really interesting items on the agenda. Please come prepared to discuss them and have, have a good week, y'all. Weird journey.